Being three o'clock, I'll call the meeting of the Select Board to order on September 4th, 2024. Note, this meeting is being televised, streamed, and recorded by Born TV. If anyone in the audience is audio or videotaping, they need to acknowledge it at this time. Use of flash photography during Select Board meetings is prohibited. If anyone from the public wishes to access the meeting, they can do so by calling the following conference line, 1-929-205-6099. The Zoom meeting ID is 884-9062-1617. The password is all capital C W M P. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise the hand icon until the chair asks them to vote. All items within the meeting agenda are subject to deliberation and votes. We have in-person Peter Meyer, Mary Jane Missrangelo, Anne Marie Saronian. And on Zoom for the Select Board, we have Melissa Ferretti and Gina Zerovitz. I'm not going to call the Waste Water Advisory Committee meeting to order yet because we only have one, two, three, four, five members. I don't see anyone for Waste Water on Zoom. Kathy Fox Alfano is on her way. She's stuck in traffic. That will be the quorum. When she comes, we'll call it to order. She has to leave after an hour. When she leaves, we'll un-call the quorum. So when she comes, I'll call the meeting and announce the membership. Public comments on non-agenda items. Public comments are allowed for up to three minutes. Is there anyone here for a public comment on a non-agenda item? No. Okay. Policy workshop, comprehensive wastewater management plan, discussion with environmental partners, and revised cost tables and detailed task timeline for years one, two, five of the draft implementation plan. Okay, who's going to start the workshop? Kate or Ellen? Who's going to speak?
I'll be speaking first.
Okay. Go ahead, Kate.
Okay, okay. Are you ready? All righty. So there are only two documents we're going to walk through today. We're going to walk through them step by step here. Checking a walk through what we talked about last time, what I reflected on the updated detailed schedules, and then we'll dive into the process. So to start, I'm going to turn your attention to the preliminary implementation schedule, which has the years outlined and then detailed tasks here on the left-hand side. And my version, I did start highlighting a couple of talking points just for our discussion here today. I've already made some notes of things that I can change for outrunning.
Kate, can you just hold on a second? We have now, we have achieved quorum for Waste Water Advisory Committee. So I'll call that meeting, the meeting of the Waste Water Advisory Committee, to order. President Wayne Sampson, Keith Barber, Mary Jane Missrangelo, Marlene McCollum, John Duggan, and Kathy Fox Alfano. Thank you. You may resume.
Okay, okay. So the preliminary implementation schedule. So as requested in our last workshop, we've been talked about what some of the detailed items might look like for being able to through the two priority watersheds or tier-one watersheds. These are the two watersheds that have TMDL. Last time, we talked about moving forward with a watershed permit for Finney Harbor because the core sewer area with sewer being directed towards the more middle school wastewater treatment facility outside of Finney Harbor was discussed as the preferred alternative. There's first action plans associated with the CWMP. The other item that was discussed was in the Gansett Quity Harbor, TMDL would not be pursuing a watershed permit. Instead, the goal is to pursue default Title V regulations for nitrogen-sensitive area, natural resource areas, which means that existing and any new onsite systems would need to be, the best available nitrogen-reducing technology looks better by 2030. So the schedule focuses on, albeit, we didn't have scheduling out the first seven years or so, but they will focus on that first stage of implementation and walk through some of the detailed items that will need to take place in addition to the building. So what needs to take place before you get to the actual construction? And then we'll go over to costs, and I will show you how those costs align with some of the detailed items that we have listed here. Okay. So starting here in 2024, I did not want to forget, and I did want to keep sight of the completing the MIPA review process. I do have an official in writing request, MIPA, to confirm that we will still need to pursue the special project review for the CWMP simply because we will have a general use alternative for Gansett Quity, which is a TMDL watershed. And that this will be one of the first in the state to have the best available nitrogen-reducing technology as the primary alternative for implementation. So it is assuming that best case, we are able to file said environmental notification form, or E N F, for the special project review by November 2024. We then will need to complete the mandatory public comment process by filing a announcement the Environmental Monitor, by keeping public comments open for a period of 30 days, holding a public hearing within that 30 days for the public. And then you will receive comments from the public as well as from the joint review done by MIPA, MAC DEP, and the Cape Cod Commission. They're reviewing, the Cape Cod Commission specifically will review the CWMP of consistency with the 208 form for Cape Cod.
Can I ask a question? Who is completing the public comment process and receiving comments? MIPA? Is that a MIPA process, or is that our process?
MIPA will be the receipt of all comments relating to this document, and then they will also be able to provide their own comments.
All right. You said something about, you said something about filing a notice of public hearing. Is that something that we do or something that MIPA does that's not on this list?
And I can add that essentially when you file an environmental notification form, you also have to advertise that filing with the Environmental Monitor. So it's kind of assumed under Task One, since you filed the E N F, you're also filing with the Environmental Monitor. So that would be environmental partners on behalf of the Towne Board. And then for the public comment period that was being closed, that would go through the MIPA comments. They essentially have an online portal where the public and other entities that are on the notification list from the Environmental Monitor, such as federal, state, and tribal entities, will have the ability to comment online, talk through that process. Does that make sense?
Question?
Yeah.
So our responsibility is just to notify that that portal is available to the public?
And that's-
But MIPA creates the portal and-
We advertise it?
For the public, and we just have to advertise that that exists?
I-
The Towne Board will need to file a legal ad as well. So it needs to be filed with a newspaper.
Okay.
Okay, but the tasks, it says, complete public comment process and receive comments. That's really a MIPA public comment process and MIPA receiving comments.
That's what I'm saying. That-
Yeah.
That's MIPA responsibility.
Somehow, MIPA has to be included in that task to make sure it's understood that we are not going to have some-
Public hearing.
-public comment process for this. This is, MIPA's going to hold a public hearing, and MIPA's going to receive comments.
But our only responsibility is the advertisement piece.
Yeah, so the-
You should clarify, MIPA will not hold a public hearing, but MIPA may request that the Towne Board hold a public meeting, which needs to be included as a simple notice within our advertisement. So questions would be, would you like to hold a public hearing? It is recommended. It can be a hybrid public hearing. The comments received at that meeting will still need to be submitted as comments. So the goal will be that you can hold the public hearing, but that any formal comment on the draft recommended plan would still need to go through the MIPA online portal for receiving official comments. If that makes sense?
Okay.
So if the town would like to receive feedback from the public while the open comment period for MIPA is happening concurrently, then that would still need to be, the date would need to be determined and the advertisement for a public meeting and for holding a public hearing on the direct recommended plan would still be the responsibility of the town. But it is optional to hold a hearing.
So is this-
Okay.
This is like clear, I'm sorry, not, this is not particularly clear to me as to what needs to be done and who is responsible. So I'd like to talk a little, I'd like to clarify this complete MIPA review process to, so that I understand the steps in the process.
And what our responsibility is.
And what our responsibilities are and whose responsibility. So-
Yeah.
So this first task is for Born to file the E N F for the special project review, right?
Mm-hmm. And they file it on our behalf, correct? Environmental partners?
Correct. Environmental partners would file the E N F and submit to the Environmental Monitor-
Okay.
-the notice of the E N F submission on the Towne Board. Would it be helpful if I added a responsibility column right after the name of the task? To help make that clear?
Yes, I think that's like, because you have-
Or even in parentheses.
So you have the color, I started looking at what the color coding represented, and the color coding represents only the task. Sometimes color coding in one of these Gantt charts represents who is responsible for doing the task, but since we don't have that, I think adding a, adding, adding a responsible person and clarifying. So is filing, I mean, you're talking, when you're talking, I don't write as fast as you talk. So sometimes I get behind on what you say. So, so environmental partners is going to file the E N F for the special project with MIPA, right?
Correct.
Okay. So the E N F gets filed on the Towne, on behalf of the Towne Board for a special project review with, with MIPA. Then there's a separate task, which is submitting a, is an N O Y? What is the, what is, we're submitting to the register?
You are submitting notice of filing to the Environmental Monitor-
Okay.
-which will trigger the public comment period. So essentially, filing the E N F will also trigger a mail-out. Let's call it a mail-out. It'll be virtual, but it's a mail-out to the Environmental Monitor and a legal ad in local newspapers notifying the public that a comment period is open for the draft recommended plan.
Okay. So first, we file the E N F. Second, we have the notice of filing to the Environmental Monitor. Third, we have to make it, we hold an optional public hearing? Optional task is having, are we going to have a public hearing on this?
Right. Or will MIPA require us to do it? Wasn't that one of the, that MIPA has, may require us to hold a public hearing?
It is highly recommended by MIPA, but if it's not required-
Okay.
-the E N L.
And is, when, when should we make that decision as to whether we're going to have a public hearing?
Sooner than later.
By October, if we plan to file November.
M J?
Yes. Keith?
Keith Barber here. So in the interest of transparency, it would seem that a public hearing or a public comment period in person would be the only way to have people not think this is some kind of a back room under the table kind of a deal, would seem to me, my opinion.
Well, for transparency purposes.
For informational purposes.
Yeah, I don't think anybody here disagrees with that at all.
The question, I think the question is, one of the questions that we have to ask ourselves is what is the appropriate time to have that public hearing? Is that, is it appropriate to have a public hearing before we file the E N F? Or do we want to make all these decisions in a vacuum with no feedback and file an E N F and then open it up for a public hearing? I mean, I'm talking process there.
Right, right.
So, or do we do both? I mean, do we have some, do we have some sort of public meeting before we, we file the E N F? Or, and then one after we've filed so people can ask questions? Or do we?
The filing's in November, right?
Well, the filing, right now, it's scheduled for November. And we have to think about, if we, if we file in November and then we're going to have a public hearing, like, when are we going to have that public hearing? In the beginning of December?
Oh, I think it should be prior. Personally, I think it should be prior.
Yeah, because Town Meeting is always like, right before Halloween, like the 21st or around there. So there isn't a lot of time.
What's on the E N F?
That's my question. Good question.
What's on the E N F? What specifically are, is that, is that E N F form? What does that E N F form dictate?
Kate? Kate, go ahead and answer that.
So the, the environmental notification forms will include specific forms that MIPA pulls together to basically specify what will be triggered as part of the MIPA review process. So the paperwork has requirements that MIPA will ask for. It's the items like, where is the project taking place? In this case, we'll be doing a special project review. So we're talking about, the CWMP is been a four-year planning effort taken on by the Towne Board. We're looking at townwide watersheds. And we prioritize immediate implementation in the two TMDL watersheds. Walking through the implementation plan in both schedule, process, and policy objectives. So it's essentially, you're submitting all of the work done to date on the CWMP and the recommended plan as a single deliverable. So you're giving them all of the backup from the last four years of work. You're adding in a climate change resiliency assessment to determine what the potential climate impact would be on the proposed work and also a greenhouse gas assessment of the proposed work. So they have two specific worksheets and processes that will follow for that. And then the, the next largest attachment is the assessment of the environmental justice population affected by the project area, which in this case is townwide. But we would be focusing on specifically where the actions would be occurring. So looking at the core sewer needs areas to see what any potential effects would be, positive or negative in any affected environmental justice areas. So big picture, the goal is to reduce nitrogen pollution to the environment. So the net benefit would be positive, but we do need to take into account any temporary impacts such as construction equipment and short-term duration construction activity that might take place. We also identified as part of the project area, if any of the work will be taking place in any resource areas, such as wetlands, areas of critical environmental concern, historic areas, and MIPA justification just via mapping. So a lot of the mapping we've already completed is part of the needs assessment, but now including the final preferred alternative. We just put those layers back on the mapping to show MIPA specifically, this is where we plan to do the project. These are where resource areas are surrounding the project. The project being at a sewer, a sewer, which is a standard MIPA trigger. And it will require that MIPA to review those areas for any potential environmental concerns. For the general use IA impact, those are on individual properties in Gansett Quity. That is what we will require the special project review of from MIPA's perspective. So the E E N S is, is giving them a large stack of homework we've done as well as filling out some specific additional items that they require, and then submitting them all as part of the submission. We also will include all past public participation attendance held to date for the CWMP, including publicly held meetings and reputations given at publicly held meetings. So all of the public participation to date will be included as an attachment. Does that kind of help, Melissa?
So in a nutshell, we have some decisions to make prior to this E N F form, correct? Being, that will trigger the MIPA review. I mean, there are some big decisions that have to be made prior to November in submitting this, this E N F with respects to final decisions about watershed permits, final decisions about general use IAs. Does it have to get into details with respects to how many in those areas? Or is it just the decision about, yes, we're, if, if the decision is, yes, we're soaring Finney's Harbor, yes, we're using general use IA systems or any hybrid? Does it get down to the minutia of, we're going to do 285 a year? We're going to do, or is it just general decision?
It will be specific to, yes, what your goal per year is for installation. And the reasoning is that you have to demonstrate what you are planning to remove in wastewater loading per year. So yes, as, as you would be, the MIPA-
Okay.
-project review-
Yep.
-filing the draft recommended plan would be getting feedback on your implementation plan, which would include getting into these specific examples for the first phase, the first five years-
Right.
-detail of your plan. Yeah.
So then I, we would have to hold a public hearing prior to, I mean?
Well, looking at this, the reason for saying it has to be filed in November is that that's in order to be able to complete the public comment period, address final comments, and receive from MIPA, and then, I mean, comments received from MIPA are going to be February and March, it looks like.
Right.
And then adopt a final recommended plan at Spring Town Meeting, which is actually in May, not in April. But it looks like in order to meet an April Town Meeting deadline, we have to file with MIPA by November. And I'm feeling like I don't have yet a list in front of me of the decisions that we need to make and have done by November. We just had a toll to us, but I, 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 there's a, there's a part of this implementation plan that's missing between now and filing the E N F. What do we need to do?
Make some big decisions?
Well, I don't know. I mean, do we? So I guess, so, and I think that's maybe-
We need to narrow down-
Yeah, so-
Narrowing down what that plan's going to look like.
All right. So, so we have the implementation plan as far as if we file by November. And is that the beginning of November or the end of November?
It's open.
There are two opportunities every month for filing, and that corresponds to the two times per month that the Environmental Monitor is published. So, I can be more specific when it comes to exact dates, but my goal would be to aim for the first one, not just because the Thanksgiving holiday may impact the scheduling of the second monitor. So, my goal would be to try to get to the filing for November.
So, that's for the notice of filing? Is there any, can we decide any day we want to file with MIPA? We, it's just the notice of filing to the environmental monitor that is, can only be done on two specific dates?
It would be the same day.
One triggers the other, right? One triggers the other.
Once you advertise, it has to.
But the two times per month is triggered by environmental monitor, not MIPA, right? There's only two times a month that the environmental monitor publishes?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
Correct. So, essentially, there's two times a month that you can send things to MIPA. That will then start the MIPA clock.
Okay. And we don't know what those dates are in November?
We do know the date, but I didn't put it specifically on this right here. MIPA will publish in advance the dates for the environmental monitor deadline to be included in the two opportunities per month. So, that list is scheduled in advance, so I can forward that to the select board, as well as update the schedule with that additional line item on here.
Okay. So, but it's fair to say that one of them's sort towards the beginning of November and one of them's maybe towards the middle of November? Is that kind of the idea?
Third week, first week, third week?
That's generally the pattern they follow, yeah.
Okay.
Eleven one to eleven fifteen, eleven sixteen to twelve two.
Right.
Yep.
That's what I'm, yeah, for a public, the first publication date, if you did it between eleven one and eleven fifteen, it would be on the eleven, on eleven twenty-two. If you wanted it published in the ENF on eleven eight, you have to submit it by ten thirty-one, between ten sixteen and ten thirty-one.
I guess found it, yeah.
Between ten sixteen and ten thirty-one?
Ten sixteen, twenty twenty-four to ten thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, we'll get it in the publication on the eleven eight, twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Correct. And then they say ENF comments by eleven twenty-eight, twenty-four. And then there's a ENF decisions and any EIR comments by twelve nine, twenty twenty-four.
So, that, does that, that schedule thing has the whole breakdown of like, how it works and what those things train?
Yeah, so, for the entire year, basically, yes. They publish that schedule every year.
Yeah, so, see, us having that schedule, I think, would be helpful. So, we, gives us deadlines to work with, so we understand, like, when we have to get things done by.
Absolutely, yeah.
And then that helps us decide, like, when we need to have a public hearing.
Absolutely, yeah.
And I don't know if we're going to have a separate public hearing, or just schedule a public hearing at a select board meeting and, and invite people to come. I don't, I don't know.
I mean, if we had the time, we should, we should be doing it in each of the different villages.
So, Jean and Melissa, I, you are very small, and I can really not even see you on Zoom. So, if you have comments, you're just going to have to unmute yourself and say, you know, I'd like to speak, or, you know, kind of, can I be recognized?
Yeah, no, I have my hand up a couple times.
Yeah, I can't, I, believe me, I can't, you were like, in a little, like, posing, I can't.
One inch box.
Yeah, and I didn't open the Zoom meeting myself, so, I was just thinking. So, do you have any comments or questions, Melissa?
No, I'm just thinking about the MIPA process. I know it's, I think what I'm saying, put it on, it's exactly as she said, the time starts clicking. And I know, and I'm just curious, once that MIPA clock starts tipping, picking, and the comments come in, there's also a process, and I'm just wondering, Katie, Kate, is that something, I'm just forgetting the process, and I should probably remember this, but I do get about 500 of those emails a week from those ENS when they come out. So, is it environmental partners that actually have to send out that environmental justice notification? Because I get them for every, any project in the state, an EJ community, we get those. So, is that your part, or is that, does MIPA do that?
So, we would also send that out on behalf of the town board, correct?
Okay, all right. I wasn't sure if that was part of the MIPA trigger, or if that's something we're responsible for doing. Thank you. That was sort of my question.
So, we need a, we need a list of publication dates, and we kind of need a written list of that verbal oral, that verbal list that you gave us, Kate, of, you know, things that are going to have to be included.
In the form, right?
Yeah, things that will need to be included, and what decisions we have to make. I don't see, I, I'm, I'm not feeling that we're going to make a ten sixteen to ten thirty-one date.
No.
When's our next CWMP scheduled for October sometime?
Our next workshop is October 22nd.
So, it's possible if on October 22nd, we could make all the decisions, have all the decisions made that we need to make, that we could file the ENF between November 1st and November 15th for whatever publication on November 22nd. I don't, I don't see the earlier thing.
No.
I mean, we'd have to make the decisions today, right? Which we're not going to be able to do, I don't think. So, okay. All right. Well, I, let's quickly go through the, then, the other sort of things, the other implementation plan steps, just in the, the things that we're covering in the first five years, just what's going to be in the, just the implementation steps that are going to be in the MIPA plan.
In the ENF?
In the ENF, yeah, in the MIPA special project review. I mean, this, so.
Not the first five years, right?
The assessment and preliminary, preliminary design, right? Once we go to town meeting, we're in the assessment and preliminary design. And so, you have.
So, essentially, what we will need to look at in completing in your first year is you'll need to hit the ground running when it comes to filing that watershed permit application. So, assuming you'll be able to have your MIPA certificate in hand by spring of 2025, you'll be able to then file your watershed permit application for Finney's Harbor.
Okay, so I have a question, I have a question. So, we need something from MIPA in order to file the actual application, right? But is that different than the notice of intent to apply for a watershed permit?
Is that going to be on the?
Or is that the same thing?
The notice of intent, the notice of intent is for town board to submit. The regulations have already garnered a place for new construction for a natural resource, NSI areas. The intent, the goal of the notice of intent is it will immediately put a stay on the default Title V regulation, which will affect any new construction. So, the notice of intent is, is meant to help residents that are currently putting forward new construction applications in the natural resource, NSI areas. But for Finney's Harbor, it would immediately stop the requirement for requiring onsite systems for any homeowner in Finney's Harbor or when you file them.
All right, so I have a. I have a question, though. If, if, we're not going to be ready to file, and I, I'm, this is a question because I don't understand the watershed permit. There's, we have to make a decision at some time as whether we're going to file a notice of intent on the watershed permit, which is different than actually filing the watershed permit. Is that correct? And, and would we actually file the watershed permit before we've done the analysis of the middle school option for searing? Or would we file a notice of intent, do that assessment, and if it comes out positive, do the watershed permit? And if it doesn't come out positive, and we're going to do watershed, and then we're going to do general use IA systems instead? Like, not file the watershed permit? I mean, is that, when, when, can you withdraw a watershed permit after you filed it? Or can you withdraw a notice of intent after you filed it?
So, the goal of jumping right to file the watershed permit application is based on what we talked about last time, which is it makes sense to pursue a watershed permit if you are looking to implement a town responsible solution, or a town owned and operated solution, if you want to cut it that way. The intent is to give you the town more time to implement the Finney's Harbor item and to release immediately the five-year timeframe for existing homeowners within Finney's Harbor from needing to upgrade their onsite system immediately within five years to a general use or better IA system.
I think I need to ask my question better, because I'm not, I'm not questioning that. So, on this, it says file watershed permit application for Finney's Harbor, and the start is May of 2025, and the close is September of 2025, right? Does that mean we're not filing that application until September of 2025?
The intent would be to file the, the watershed permit requires own application process. It also has requirements from MAC DEP specifically for another hearing regarding the permit itself. So, by you having completed the MIPA process of review for the recommended plan towards CWMP, and having your MIPA certificate in hand, the hope is that it will also expedite the MAC DEP watershed application process. So, at that point, because you are already undergoing the MIPA review, if the intent is to file the watershed permit, the notice of intent could be sent to MAC DEP. Also, when you are finalizing your MIPA application, so essentially, you could, as soon as November 2024, file your notice of intent, which again, the goal of that notice of intent is to stop the requirement for new construction in the natural resource, NSI areas, and to inform MAC DEP that you intend to file a watershed permit. They will read the CWMP as part of the MIPA review process, in which they will see, oh, Bourne wants to do a watershed permit for Finney's Harbor. That's how they leave out their implementation plan and schedule. So, by you filing your notice of intent, it's simply the process of the letter and providing these exact attachments, which would also be included in the MIPA package. You just set a separate placeholder with MAC DEP.
So, add that Y item. Right, right. So, we'll add that Y item, that thing. NOI goes at the same time as the MIPA notification, MJ?
No, I don't want to add it then, I'm not sure. I, I, I don't want to, I'm not sure I want to add it then, because I, I.
Got it.
I don't, when is that, one of the big things that we had last time was the hydrogeologic testing to determine where the watershed was for the, the treatment plant, the middle school treatment plant. When is that hydrogeological testing done? Is that part of the MIPA process? Or is part of the assessment and preliminary design process?
So, I did get some clarification from the MAC DEP of the treatment in Cape Island. And their recommendation would be to not include a detailed scope of work for the hydrogeologic assessment for the groundwater discharge expansion as part of MIPA, because it could open up the town to additional MIPA comment on something that is a MAC DEP permit. So, that I did schedule later in the schedule, because in learning that from MAC DEP, the recommendation would be to put four-year plans intending to review an increased capacity at the Bourne Middle School existing discharge, and the alternative would be to investigate installation of a new groundwater discharge for Bourne Middle School wastewater treatment plant. Both of those answers to those questions can only be done once you actually work on a draft plan of study and give MAC DEP the specific proposal. So, if you are saying as part of your alternatives analysis that you intend to use the existing treatment plant, use up its available capacity, and then look into loading that treatment plant discharged higher, that that is within the actual execution of the plan, and that you do not need to have that information in order to file the MIPA review and in order to get your CWMP reviewed. You will be able to do the detailed investigation, because it's part of your actual implementation plan. So, I do know that was a question made last time, and I did get clarification from them. That plan I have started in late 2025, early to 2026. So, having it in year two of your plan is still putting you on track for being able to install sewer against Finney's Harbor within the first 10 years of your plan. So, if I may back up a step, I can kind of walk through, so the color coding, I'm just going to, correct me if I'm wrong, story coding. The color coding I did is based on some general rolled up, high-level phases for essentially, what do you need to do to be able to start constructing? So, boom, annual sewers installed, loads removed from Finney's Harbor watershed, working backwards from there on what needs to be done beforehand. So, and I started with the watershed permit application for Finney's Harbor and undergoing that specific process, which is a MAC DEP process, and then undergoing the essentially review of the Board of Health, existing policies, and assessing whether new local IA regulations would be required. And this is something we touched upon briefly at our last workshop, which was, do you want to make a default requirement for any new onsite system in Bourne? How do you want to locally address policymaking on a townwide scale? And this would affect the implementation in the Gansett Quity Harbor, which is the main GYA alternative that's involved.
My question is.
Here.
You know, we say we new need to expand and write new regu, the Board of Health needs to write new regulations. Are we going to have to, as a community, budget some money so they can get consultants to do this? Because the Board of Health is already stress thin, thin as it is. There's no way they're going to be able to tackle maybe this additional thing to go with it, so, I mean, and from the looks of it, it's like the special at next year's special, as opposed to at the annual in May. It looks like October and November of next year is what you have planned out to budget for it. And if we're going to go down this road, then maybe, maybe we want to do it sooner than later, unless the money isn't there to do it. And would that include going for an RFP and advertise for a consultant? Or is this something environmental partners, you can amend their scope of work or, and a new contract and have them do it?
It's a question for you, I guess, Marlene. I don't know.
I know it's too early to talk.
It's, I can't answer that until some of this is finalized.
Yeah, and what, I mean, we have to figure out what the capacity.
we have to figure out what the capacity is going to be. We can't predict.
Or like which direction we're going, so.
Which direction we're going in.
I'm, I'm feeling myself that I don't have a handle on the process that we're in. I don't understand the decision tree, how we make decisions. I don't understand our adaptive management plan. So, what it looks like to me is we're, right now, we're, we've got a plan that says that we're going to explain the wastewater, the, the, the treatment plant at the middle school, right? We don't have any information as to whether that's feasible or not. And so, I can't see filing a wastewater, a watershed permit until we have the answer that it's feasible. We could file a notice and say we might be filing a watershed permit. But I don't think we should be doing that. I mean, I, I don't know that we want to do that until we know that, that we actually have a feasible. And, and one of the things I think you guys probably have very clear in your head, Kate and Helen, what our, what the adaptive management program is for the comprehensive wastewater management plan. I'm not sure that anybody else in this room, except for probably Bob Dwyer and Marlene, have a good handle on what the adaptive management. So I think that's where having the decision trees of the decisions that we need to make now and when they're going to, when, when in our adaptive management program those could change.
When you say adaptive management program, are you referencing, what, what are you referencing? Like the?
Calendar, can you explain what the adaptive management program is of the CWMP?
I, and, I'd be happy to have Kate kind of go through that. It might be helpful to, to explain what your perception is of it to make sure that we're on the same page. But let Kate go through it, and then if your understanding is different, I'd like to under- you know, understand what that is, MJ.
Okay.
If you have a, if you have a PowerPoint slide for that adaptive management program, if you put it up on the bigger screen as you're talking, so it's easier to understand it?
This isn't theirs.
Oh.
So I don't have a slide handy for that, but if it's helpful to not have this on the screen, I can just help share.
Is that like the non-traditional?
The adaptive management plan is set by the community and the process for checking in on progress for CWMP evaluation. So walk with me. Let's say you present your plan as we discussed last meeting, which is general use IA in the first five years from beginning to critique, and then taking a little bit of a longer timeline, let's say 10 years for, for to have sewer. And that, that's the, ultimately the end goal of that exercise. The adaptive management plan would check in after about five-year increments to be able to see, you, the community, how are you doing based on that plan you submitted in 2024. So you set the calendar for 2028 to prepare and gather data. You work with stakeholders such as your own sewer department, your own consultant, town administrator, and the Board of Health to say, where are we in tracking our journey? You'd be able to say, we've been able to be ahead of our goals for the Gansett and have a lot of volunteers. We have met our goal for converting title-fired systems to general use IA. And you flip to the health department to be able to provide that data, to construct information about where you were able to follow them. And then for Phineas Harbor, you would report out on progress towards being able to build those sewer alternatives. So progress in an adaptive management plan means you could be looking at the Borne Middle School treatment plant coming up with preliminary design to expand treatment. But within that first five-year window, you're just documenting, are we still on track for our goal, which is sewer-ing? Or are you falling behind, or you've reached a decision point, or you need to look at a different option? So under the watershed permit, it is a mandatory five-year check-in point, and you have annual reports due to MAC DEP. If you do not opt in to the watershed permit, then the adaptive management plan is, is more geared on how do you want to track your plan against the CWMP. There isn't necessarily a mandatory check-in or mandatory annual reporting, but MAC DEP will most likely reach out to ask you on a similar time interval, how's it going? And when they say, how's it going, they mean, show us the data on what you've been able to implement or understanding what you still have left on your 20-year to do with. Does that kind of make sense?
Right. So it's a check-in, it's data collection. It's then, at that point in time, if what we're doing, it doesn't have the success we thought it would, we have an opportunity to pivot and, and apply some alternatives to the plan?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And the formal way that you will track it as well is, so let's say that you do your groundwater discharge assessment and that the results show for whatever reason, you cannot continue to discharge at the Borne Middle School, you'll need to find a second location to discharge your wastewater effluent, right? This is just one scenario. Let's say that in the first five years, you do the study, you come up with preliminary information, and you are not able to pursue that treatment option. Then what you can do is do the groundwork to just, to find what your alternative would be for, you know, we can't do it at the Borne Middle School, but a parcel just came up for sale. It's being donated to the town of Borne. We're going to investigate groundwater discharge at that location instead, and we're going to revise our design so that our treatment plant ends up being at parcel B instead of the Borne Middle School. That would trigger a notice of project change or an NTC, which is just you filing that information exactly, that conclusion with MIPA to say, hey, we actually did this discovery, we did this investigation, we found that we can't afford here, so we're going to pursue this other site instead. Here's our environmental, study, here's our environmental assessment of this other location, location B.
Can I ask another question? Follow-up question. So, this, this plan, in your experiences with other communities who have this adaptive management plan, is it something that the town hall does, like the public health department, or is it something that an outside consultant does with, as far as data collection and assessing, like?
It depends on the community. For example, most communities will ask for help in order to get it done faster. It depends on the capacity you have in town. For example, town of Markstable, they have chosen instead to invest heavily in town staff to execute their CWMP and planning. So they've elected to do most of that work in town. You absolutely have neighbors that would, I hope, be willing to share their best practices with you to kind of help you inform that. And that's something where, again, you always have the option to pursue outside consultant help to do that work, but it is something where if you do have some capacity within your staff chain, that you absolutely can do that in town as well. It's not required that an outside consultant.
I think, I think the milestones are not clear. I think we have in this, in the assessment and preliminary design stage, I don't, I feel that there are milestones that are going to have to be determined to have us be comfortable on continuing to pursue this alternative as our alternative. And I don't think, and to me, that's part of the adaptive management planning approach, is that you acknowledge that there are milestones that you're going to have to make assessments at to determine. And I think there's some that are out there, but we haven't defined them, so I'll just leave it at that. Okay. Does anybody else have any questions on the implementation schedule?
MJ.
Keith.
Keith Barber here again. So my question probably is for the last meeting, but I didn't ask it then. So, the treatment plant at the middle school, where does the effluent go from that plant?
It's a groundwater discharge permit. And pretty sure that it's under the soccer fields, right?
Yeah.
And it gets.
You know, like, I think it's under the soccer fields, so like, oh, there's like that raised area.
All that.
Okay. So if we expand the number of properties that are served by that plant, does that already have enough capacity for those additional?
Yeah, there's an empty field behind it, the old baseball field, so by, behind Aramay-Nortos over in there, that big empty field, I don't think they even use much anymore, maybe enough to, if we had to add on more.
Yeah, where the football does their practices.
Yeah. That may be the.
I don't know. You know, that's, that's all.
That's a Jordan question.
So that's an open question. I mean, the question of the capacity, the question of whether we can access the capacity that's not being used, or whether DEP would say, well, you have to keep, you have, even though you're only using 9,000 gallons of a 35,400 capacity per day, you have to reserve that 35,400 capacity in case you need it in the future, so the square footage of the buildings. I think there's a lot that's changed since 2000 in terms of water use. Like, we're seeing a lot of change in terms of people are using water-saving toilets and water-saving showerheads, so that water use and subsequent septic use is down. We don't have the same population on that campus that we used to have, so I, I don't know that, I don't know the answer to that question, but that's a milestone to me.
So, the treatment plant, how does it treat nitrogen? Does that plant, so?
Yeah, if that plant is rated for like 10, 10, I want to say 10. Is that the plant, is that a 10? And I think, and they're just about to do like a $2 million upgrade for the RBCs. So it, it might end up being better, I don't know. But it is, it is, it does remove nitrogen.
Which, it's, so, we, before we kind of commit to add however many homes, do we, I know that question is like, which came first, the chicken or the egg? Do we have to decide all that before we decide to say we're going to do all those extra homes?
Well, yeah, we wouldn't be able to add to the capacity without having.
Okay.
An evaluation done, yeah.
Yeah, we can't, we're, we're not, we can't just do it. Like, yeah, it's, there's extensive permitting that's going to be involved in all of this, so. I mean, and I think that some of that is, you know, design the, the, assess the recommended preliminary treatment process upgrades to meet, increase the GWD.
Capacity, yeah.
And groundwater discharge permit is a very complex process. It takes a long time. Marlene?
So I, I know Helen has her hand up, and then I, after Helen, I have something to add to the schedule too.
Thank you. If you have the zoom, I can't tell anybody having a hand up. Same with Helen. So Helen, do you want to speak?
Yeah, if this is the wrong perspective, just let me know. I think it is important that we get into the details of when decisions have to be made and add some, add those to the marker here. It just, Keith's question made me think about reminding everybody again. So, the intent of a CWMP is to look at the whole picture of the community and come up with a plan, comprehensive wastewater management plan. And it gets approved through the community in terms of, this is the approach that the town wants to take over the next 20 years, 30 years. And in that process, we will be doing the following. We are going to look in more detail at the groundwater discharge hydrology for the groundwater beds and apply to MAC DEP to utilize the current available capacity for some additional connections in the Phineas Harbor area. And potentially more if during that hydrogeology analysis, we can identify that we can load more onto those beds or not, or there is an area right next to it that we can add to and increase. And so, that very first stage of the implementation plan is going to be that analysis. But not to do the analysis prior to doing the comprehensive wastewater management plan. And so that is why it's presented here as the recommended plan. So the recommended plan is, you have a treatment plant, we know it has some extra capacity, we know you can do some connections up to it. We recommend that you investigate that, add on as much as you can, and then further investigate if we can expand that and all, and if we can, then we're going to connect up to there. And if we can't, it's going to give us an additional five years so those people don't have to in the next five years upgrade their, their septic system and come to find out we have a capacity of a treatment plant. Does that help? Put it in perspective, Kate?
Yes, thanks, Helen.
Okay.
Thanks, Helen.
Yeah.
If, if we file a watershed permit and we have unidentified sewer-ing area, can we have our own local regulations for properties that are not in the sewered area to require them to have IA systems so that we would have, like, you're going to be in the sewered area, so we're not going to, we're, we're going to not make you put in an IA system, but if you are, if you're not in that sewered area. Yeah, okay.
So, so it's my understanding that within the watershed, if you identify a sewer area, that's not the entire watershed.
Yeah.
For, for those areas that you, that the town has absolutely no intention of sewer-ing in the future, yes, the, you can have local regulations that require that within that watershed, in those areas that we're not planning on sewer-ing, IA's, IA's are mandatory.
Okay.
And if I can just add, in the blue block of tasks, you know, we've, we've been talking about the technical, I get, the, the technical investigation that's required for the treatment plant, you know, the loading studies and the permitting and that type of thing. I think part of that, as part of the tasks in that blue, blue block of tasks, the select board and, the select board and the school committee need to reach an understanding on, on the jurisdiction, the, the legal jurisdiction of the plant, because we're, it's a, there's no question, it's a, it's a. Because we're, it's a, there's no question, it's a, it's a town of born asset, but right now, it's under the jurisdiction of the school committee. So that needs to be made clear that right now, the select board doesn't have, doesn't have the legal authority.
Actually, we probably have to put that in a, very high in that process.
Because the, for you to kind of commission those studies and do that work, town meeting would have to give you jurisdiction. And that's something that I, I think you would want to resolve with the school committee and town meeting earlier before, you know, before going too far down the road. Because if, if.
We actually, we.
There's other things too.
Well, we may actually need to do that before we even put it in our CWMP.
I, I, my, my take is the same as with, as with Helen. It's, I don't think it's a reason to delay the CWMP. I think it's part of your, I think it's another piece of your investigation in your implementation plan. That's part of, that's part of your implementation. And that's one of those, you know.
And it's part of, it's a milestone.
It's one of those.
It's a real milestone in terms of, in terms of our decision tree. Because if we can't come to agreement with the school committee.
Or if town meeting says no.
Right.
If town meeting says no, well, then you essentially have your answer that you're not moving forward with that. So that's part of the adaptive, it would be one of those points in your adaptive management that if the answer from town meeting is that it's, it's not under the jurisdiction of the select board, then essentially you stop there and you don't invest in the.
Right.
The technical studies.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, that's a good point.
Yeah.
So we have to add that task early, in the process.
But it's still in the assessment. It's not, it's not the technical assessment, but it's, it's the feasibility, it's part of the feasibility assessment.
Okay. It's, it's getting to be 409, so I'd like to go walk through the cost sheet so that we make sure we have at least an understanding of what you're thinking is there, so we can review it.
So then I switch to the cost sheet. The biggest item I wanted to show is that it does align on an annual basis with some of these detailed items here for the assessment and preliminary design. So the intent is to outline some costs, conceptual class five costs. So they are very high levels. They are not detailed. They do not represent a cost of environmental partners with quotes for doing that task. I'm simply trying to reflect the ballpark that you would be in for doing some of the intermediate steps, as well as the bigger steps like construction. But the intent absolutely here was to align with that detailed list of tasks as well. However, this is focusing on the construction item. So you will note that I do not have investigation of board health policies or assessing any type of, like, a software investment for the board of health to better track general use items of the capital cost. I do not have that listed here. What I have is the physical implementation cost for homeowners to implement a general use IA system. And then as part of the operation and maintenance costs, each of those installations would be paying is through the assumed, the exact same assumption for the individual, like, an RME type cost or a cost to fund a town tracking system. So there is included in that operation and maintenance cost consideration for that. But at this point, it's just an assumption of what you look to collect from each system. So anyway. What this is looking at is aligning with what we spoke about last time. The tier one or the two TMDL watersheds are listed here as the number of parcels for the prioritized first half of the plan implementation. The majority of parcels are generally use IA, with better technology. And the Phineas Harbor parcels in year 16, 17 are the sewer expansion options, assuming the conservative load removal requirement. So this is assuming that there would still be a 10 milligram per liter nitrogen load into Phineas Harbor. You may not need to sear as many parcels if one of the determinations from the groundwater discharge assessment is that in fact, there would be no flow back into Phineas Harbor. So I did use the conservative, the worst case planning numbers for what you would still be looking at if you had to build the full whole sewer area that we had outlined previously on the recommended plan draft. So I did not update this to assume that what predicted percentage removal would occur for Phineas Harbor sewer, sewer area. Does that make sense, kind of sticking with like the first three lines?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I understand.
So then moving into the tier one capital cost, I did outline here the cost for the Phineas and Queteze. These would likely not be town assuming costs. These would be costs that the individual homeowners would need to incur to be able to install systems at the rate required. So collectively, the homeowners in the Phineas and Queteze harbor would be spending 2.4 to 2.9 billion dollars per year. It is accounting for the inflation over this time period that is why it is increasing. But that is not the estimated capital cost.
Is the reason that this is not CWSRF eligible as of 2024? Because we don't have a watershed permit?
No, it is that the CWSRF and for other regional projects, which is something that we still need to get in writing from SFRS, but for every project they have said that they will not pay state revolving funds to improve onsite systems for private homes.
It's because the asset is not owned by the municipality. It's privately owned by the property owner.
So how is Wellfleet doing it?
Well.
I mean, how is Wellfleet doing it? Because they, that's why they have a watershed permit and they have approval for $3 million for IA systems.
You're right. As, as far as I know, the last I heard, this was January, so there might be an update on this, MJ. But the last I heard is they didn't know how they were going to do it. They had been talking about buying, quote unquote, buying the commitment, excuse me, buying the equipment and then giving it to the homeowner to install. But then how would they track the warranty for that? They hadn't figured that out. They hadn't figured out any of the details yet. So as far as I know, they haven't started to even use that. Did they get, they were on the.
Part of P.
Attentive use plan, yes. So they were on the intended use plan, they got an appropriation. I don't know if they've even moved forward with that yet because they couldn't figure out the detailed legal lease process in regards to how do you give pieces of equipment to private entities and then have them do the installation? Because they don't have an easement on those people's properties. And that's one of the things we talked early on in this whole process was, you know, is that something that Bourne wants to get into? Can you take easements of every property? Do you build all the IA systems yourselves? I mean, it gets into a huge, just legal piece that will take a while to figure it out. So as far as I know, they haven't moved ahead with that. I can find out. I know we're doing other work in Wellfleet, so I could find out about it, if you'd like me to.
Yeah, I, I would just, they got approved first, and that was my, not whether they implemented.
For GUAAs.
They haven't implemented it yet, but they were eligible to apply for SRF, so.
And.
I don't know why they were eligible, they do have a watershed permit. So it might have been in order to have SRF. And I recall that from way back in the early Title V stuff, is that the watershed permit, one of the reasons for doing a watershed permit was to have the, was to be eligible for the SRF for the private homeowner things. So, I mean, there's other alternatives that we can talk about in terms of.
Funding?
In terms of funding. I mean, this is assuming like 42,500 per system.
Per household, yeah.
Per house, per system. But I don't know, there's the septic loan program. If we have a CWMP approved, then they can go through the septic loan program and based on their income can get like 0% financing. So it is, there are a lot of other options. And there's, there's other ways for us, if we were to do, say, a wastewater infrastructure fund, by taking some of the CPA or by adding a different surcharge, that we could create a grant fund where people could apply for wastewater improvements, right? I mean, so that we could fund 25%.
Yeah, we've had that conversation before.
I mean, the SRF is, is, it's, it's helpful because if we could get SRF money, we, we could have 25% of the cost covered by the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund. And, you know, that 25% of 42,000 is a lot of money.
They're, they're seeking a grant for 450,000 from the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund to match the town's appropriation, which would fund 20 systems during the first two to three years of the watershed plan and a newly tripled task credit worth up to 18,000 as part of a tax package.
What are you reading?
It's an article in the Providence, Providence Town.
Went from when?
Recently. Actually, no, January of 2024.
Yeah, that, we, we didn't get the money that, I mean, there's a lot, I mean, it's helpful to get the SRF. That, one of the reasons SRF on the Cape is important is because of the matching funds from the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund. So, well, I, it's just, I'm getting too in the details, okay. And in the year five, 18,748, five for the treatment plant, what is that, what does that cost? That's just like.
So, that's a million.
Yeah.
So I have the, I have broken down for here, but the year five assumes the four middle school wastewater treatment facility construction upgrade for capacity and the groundwater discharge permit plus construction services. Year six includes the Phineas Sewer Contract One, or assuming half of the Phineas, 436 parcels, so 218 parcels. That's super ready to spend into, and then a year seven will inflation. It's a class five, so again, could be as much as 100% or as low as 50% of these costs at this point. The 20.3 million for the remainder of contract two plus, construction plus construction services.
Kate, year, year five's number, the 18 million, does that include any collection system? Or is that all treatment and discharge?
All treatment and discharge.
And year six and seven are collection?
Correct.
Okay.
And the year one through four costs, I did break them down, again, just based on what the main task would be completed as, but in general, the overall cost is 2.3 million for the planning, permitting, design of the treatment facility and the sewer system expansion. And again, that also would be a plus 100% or minus 50% class five construction cost. So again, it's just trying to give an order of magnitude of all parts that these items would be broken down into, depending on what the town decided. They wanted to do in terms of how you would use purposes for outside consultants to.
And Kate, the year one through four, the planning, the, the planning and design costs there for Phineas Harbor, does that include, does that, how many, that's expand, this is a question. That's expansion of the existing middle school plant, not adding a second plant?
Correct.
And how many, how many parcels served by that expansion?
The 436 parcels.
Okay. So 436 parcels within the watershed, all being treated and discharged at Bourne Middle School. That's what these numbers are based on.
Correct.
Okay.
And the caveat change would be that, again, during the watershed, during year two, during year three, when you're looking at the groundwater modeling for the current discharge, you may find that 100% of the discharge flow goes to the canal and does not go through the Phineas Harbor invademment, which means you could at that point decide to reduce the number of parcels to be able to match the load that you'd be able to remove from Phineas Harbor. So that 436 parcels assumes that there would still be a little bit of nitrogen still going back into Phineas Harbor. If the groundwater modeling results show definitively that it is taxed with that, then you'd be able to reduce the number of parcels in order to meet the minimum load moving all requirements per the TMDL.
That would be ideal.
Yeah.
So this, this table is set up that there, none of our plan is relying on IA systems in Phineas Harbor. All of Phineas Harbor is being.
Sewered.
Sewered.
Correct.
436 parcels, which are all the parcels, but it's.
All of the parcels we need. Our target is met in the watershed by searing.
436 parcels, right.
Is, is that right, Kate?
Correct.
Okay.
So I have a question about the maintenance costs. For Phineas Harbor are very high. So in year six, the maintenance cost of 12,61,575 with only 218 people is like 5,580, 5,580 per unit.
A person, yeah, per, what, per unit, yeah, per.
Per year, per year, per year.
$400 a month.
And that seems.
Well, and that's maintenance for the school use.
A little week, I don't know.
Would be, when you add the new customer base, I'm going to call them customers. The four middle school currently only serves one customer itself. So the cost to operate and maintain that facility is still. still going to be incurred, is going to be added additional users. This is the treatment plant annual cost for the flow that we would be adding as part of two hundred and eighteen users. But it is the total flow for the plan, if that makes sense. So one point two
What's the what's the what is that one point two made up of? What is the, how did you come to that number?
Dollars is determined by the cost per mile of the sewer addition. So at this point, it's still only half of the sewer addition. Um, so it's about six miles of sewer, I believe that Finney's Harbor has about twelve miles of sewer.
One five.
Um, so it's assume would be around half of six miles. Um, because you do still need maintaining the lines themselves plus the addition of flow that equates to those two hundred and eighteen parcels. So I have to check the other screen to get the exact amount, but I'm gonna use drop numbers. Let's say it's about fifty thousand additional gallons per day of wastewater flow. You can assume an operation of maintenance cost in Bourne of and I have to pull up that assumption too, it uses the same per gallon assumption for treatment and then it's a per mile maintenance cost based on the town of Bourne municipal operations at the moment. So what I do not know exactly is what the Bourne Middle School, for example, pays or has allocated as their current wastewater operation budget. The assumptions that created the Finney's Harbor operation maintenance cost are based on what the Buzzers Bay or the town of Bourne explicitly owns.
Yeah, I I I think I don't, I don't think that's um I I think we have to look at that number, cuz I think it's too high. I I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense. And I'm trying to think of like, what is that, what is the cost of our would be better to look at the cost of maintaining our hundred thousand per gallon wastewater treatment plant as opposed to the whole Buzzers Bay thing? Because it's uh, I this this seems, I I need to have a detailed explanation of how that number is. And then all the um, it looks like for the homeowners, uh for the systems that are IA systems, the one thirty-six
Two thirty?
Yeah, one thirty-six, two thirty.
The maintenance cost for
Divided by fifty-seven.
It's being added year over year, so the two hundred and seventy-nine
Yeah, it has more users, I I understand that, but you're looking at two thousand three hundred and ninety dollars per year for maintenance of these systems, is this figuring that we have an RME? Or is it figuring that they're on their own for some sort of maintenance? And is it change over time or they? That seems like that seems like a pretty high cost for maintenance of these IA systems. But it's a lot less than the sewer cost right now, based on what the way the sewer cost is. So these need to, I need to have an understanding of the derivation of these numbers so I can explain them. Hundred and thirty-six, two hundred and thirty means two thousand ninety dollars per house based on however it's based. I need to know the underlying assumptions. And I need to know the underlying assumptions for the sewer costs. You know, this assumes maintenance of lines so much, it assumes per ga- cost per gallon of so much and so that we can explain it to people.
And the note I have is that the cost units that you referred to, MJ, are all the same as the let me play a draft reference.
As what references, as what the, as what references?
The references in the draft recommended plan that we committed to the board previously, there should be a table which refers to like
Yeah, so what table would that be? What table would that be? Do you know?
The append, uh last appendix. And I believe it's in there, this is not, I absolutely can't provide it.
I'm just so people know that Marlene had to go because there's a um county Assembly of Delegates meeting that she is representing the board at, so you know. Multitasking here.
So I I I have a question, uh as far as the big picture, so I know this, some of these, the town expenditures are capital expenses, but those still create interest. So does all this fit into the town budget or is this a prop two and a half override situation?
Well, in McGannett Squatig, none of it's in the town budget.
That I I get.
Yeah, so that that none of it's in the town budget.
Right.
When it comes to the sewer-ing
Right.
and how are we gonna do the eighteen million, it is probably a debt exclusion. I mean, it's a debt exclusion vote. And so then one of the things that we have to talk about is if it's a debt exclusion vote, we have to have the debt exclusion or to authorize the borrowing for an enterprise fund. So we have to make that decision for both of these entities. How much public support are we gonna give to these systems? I mean, are we gonna expect everyone to pay forty-three thousand? Are we gonna create some sort of way of helping to fund? Is it equitable to have people who are sewered get it? They're gonna have to pay, I mean, there's betterments, just because the town's funding them, you know, up fronting the money, there's betterments and it ends up costing them too, so what that breakdown is in terms of uh of the cost and how much is paid and what the betterment's gonna be, that's all determined down the line.
So a town meeting, if we propose this at town meeting, uh those questions are gonna be asked.
Uh they will be asked, but you know, it's, this is the plan, we don't, we're, you're gonna, it's gonna come back to you for vote before it's implemented. But we need to get it approved, so you know, it this isn't, you're not, you're not approving this. You you're not approving this spreadsheet of we're gonna be spending this money. You're just, we're just saying, this is our plan that we're pursuing. And actually, this, in in terms of cash flow, this works pretty well because the cash flow is pretty reasonable over in year over year. I mean, yes, it does look big for like eighteen million, nineteen, whatever those three years of high sewer-ing cost. But overall, compared to some of the numbers I've seen on the Cape where it's a hundred and thirty million dollar expenditure, that it it's really not.
MFP was just ninety-four million, right?
And that was, that's their, that's not their first phase.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, understanding the numbers, one of the reasons that I have, and we're gonna be probably ending pretty soon cuz it's past four thirty, but um figuring out the wastewater infrastructure fund, I think it's important to have these numbers available to people, so when I start or when the board starts going to, you know, the CPA and saying, listen, we're we're gonna take we'd like to take one percent off of you and put it to the wastewater infrastructure fund, they need to understand what the costs are gonna be, cuz the first time I had the conversation there with them, they were like, what what are you talking about, what costs, like? Yeah, so we've put a lot of money into open space and there's gonna be another open space request that's gonna, you know, so so the question is, are, is that open space still our highest priority or are we having another higher priority that we need to ask people to support? So it's gonna be all part of the plan. All right, so let's talk about, oh, Doc, John, you wanna?
Thank you. John Duggan. Being a builder and having installed these IA systems, I understand that it's gonna be very difficult to have the capacity available from the engineering firms. And so the numbers we're using probably would equal a little more than one system a week to be voluntarily installed and paid for. I think that's gonna be a very large hill to climb. I also think that long term, if a lot of the seasonal cottages in these areas become year round because there's competition for housing, the installed systems may not be the last that we have to do for it. And it does appear that we're looking at sewerage for four out of the five NSA designations, so that it's uh McGannett Squatig is IA and the others are all going to be receiving some type of sewerage. Bringing up the open space, might be a good time to think about land banking, so that like we had a hard time finding a spot for a fire department, well, sewage treatment facility areas might become even more important in the future. EPA, DP may loosen up their red about pocket systems and so forth. But we're pretty close to Falmouth, we're pretty close to the Cape Cod, uh base Cape Cod from uh yes, Squatig, McGannett Squatig, so I just wonder, should we maybe invite the town engineer and the health agent to discuss what information they have? I understand from a few town officials I've spoken with that there already already are some other uh sort of pocket treat, pocket treatment facilities around town. And maybe long term, it's a better solution to consider all these areas for sewerage. Especially since they may not be able to depend on the fact that today it would be one of the two systems that are approved from SeptiTech or General. But by the time it reaches their turn, it may be a more expensive system because of the best technology language.
Right.
Thank you.
I I mean, so this is the plan, right? And if in for the McGannett Squatig, we can put down fifty-seven systems, but we don't know that that's gonna happen. There's no enforcement, I mean, that becomes part of the five-year review. Well, you didn't do your fifty-seven plant, you didn't do your fifty-seven systems per year, so how are you gonna address this? The other thing is, and and Marlene and I have had conversations with um the Falmouth wastewater people. And, you know, they did file a notice of intent for a watershed permit for their section of McGannett. Um, I'm not sure what they're gonna end up doing, but when, we have to wa- we have to continue to watch that and say, is there, would it make sense to tap into what they're doing and would that be a better plan? But I I I don't know how far down that is in terms of Falmouth's prioritization of what they're doing with wastewater. So it could be ten years before that we even know that, so but that it's worth looking into. And it was interesting, um I was at the Cassett Walk Quality Coalition, and I will give another shout out. We gave you a shout out at our last select board meeting for having a great meeting and great information. But one of the people that talked to me uh after that meeting, just random person said, you know, why aren't you thinking about sewer-ing? I'd rather have the sewer-ing, so I don't know, I have, I know I don't have to worry about it. So there's different points of view and there's different, and we did look at some of the pocket plants in our um different things, and when we started wastewater advisory, we had the town engineer and the board of health, I mean, they were coming to all our meetings for the first year, so we've we've tried to to do that. I think we're at the point now where we have to get a CWMP. And it's not gonna be the final plan by any, you know, means, but it's a roadmap for us to say, this is what we're trying to do, and to get it for MEPA to say, you know, you're not gonna be able to do this, we don't want, we want you to do something else, so let's let's get the process rolling. We've been hung up for four years, like, let's get something on paper. And it's why I also wanted to talk about the adaptive management plan. Because there are milestones and we're gonna have to review this, are we meeting these milestones, are we doing it? And if we're not doing it, how are we gonna change it and what are we gonna do? It's, this is not, definitely not cast in concrete. Is it, what do people feel we need for our next meeting on October twenty-second to be productive, to move forward? What kind of information or documentation are you, are you, are you all interested in having? I think we've talked about
I would like the implementation script.
Jean, go ahead, Jean.
Um, I think, as we said at the beginning of the meeting, if we could add um who's responsible for what tasks and then maybe clarifying some of the deadlines, um so we make sure we understand what we're responsible for.
Yeah.
That would help for sure. Um, and then a breakdown of some of those costs that you mentioned.
Yeah.
So we can compare those.
Or just be able to explain them.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm getting to the point now, I'm feeling like when we go to explain this to people, what are we gonna explain? And how are we gonna explain it and are we gonna have the knowledge to be able to explain it?
And then the list for the ENF form
Yeah, the list.
Yeah.
Uh, the list for the ENF submit, right?
MJ, is that, is that the task list, list?
Um, that's the documents that we're gonna have to provide and a list of the ENF submittals and decisions that we have to make.
Right.
A list of the decisions.
To fill out the form.
Task, I would say we have a, so we have the ENF, we have the task, and it's like, and it would be, here's a task. Who does it? You know, and there might be somewhere, for example, public hearing, the town is running it with support from EP. Okay? And then this is, you know, EP on behalf of the town, submit to the state, that kind of thing. So we say next to each one. And then there will be a couple of those decisions that need to be made along the way that will identify MJ.
Yeah.
And so we should also, and with that backup information, tell you what decisions you need to make at the next meeting.
Yeah, and we need, yeah, we need to know, we need, we, you're gonna, we're gonna have our, a meeting on October twenty-second, and we're gonna need to know these are the decisions that you need to focus on if we're gonna file, if we're gonna file the ENF to meet the deadline, I want that deadline sheet in there. If we're gonna meet the deadline for November twenty-second. And then, and then we need to think about when our public hearings are gonna be. Like, if our public hearing's gonna be before we file the ENF or is it gonna be after we file the ENF?
Yeah, some clarification on that would be nice, because on the state website, there's definitely, you know, thirty days before you have to um post it, and then there's certain times you're supposed to do the meetings before.
Right, and if we don't, I don't think we want our thirty-day comment period to run between December fifteenth and
Yeah.
January fifteenth, I mean, that's like, you know, I mean, you, they will have the time in January, so that's okay, but a rela- a a a a comment period that actually is gonna be at a time when people will have time to comment probably makes a lot of sense, so um
John Teens back up.
Oh, John, go ahead.
John Duggan, I think keeping the residents in mind for whatever we could do for information for next meeting as well, maybe a simple comparison cost sheet that would show the difference in the capital cost, which might be the typical betterment for connecting the sewer versus the capital cost for an IA system, the ongoing estimated cost for each. And um to give us something that we can talk to people about or to keep them in the, in mind on all of these uh progressions that we're making, to simplify it.
We gotta keep it simple stupid, you know, because you gotta, I say dumb it down, but you gotta make it easier for the average person to read it, cuz even some of this stuff, I'm, my eyes is going bald.
Yeah, it's it's a tremendous amount of info, so it has, there has to be a simplified presentation, so I'm wondering if uh and I'd like to think process, but if we can kind of put a lot of this stuff together for October twenty-second, if we could maybe have a, some sort of a public hearing early in November, we don't have to have another workshop meeting to fi- to approve, right? We could do it at a regular select board meeting. And so if we think about um you know, I don't know what the next, it looks like one fifteen, ten sixteen. If if our filing of the ENF is gonna trigger a thirty-day period, is it too late if it's sometime, if we file it like the late in December? So that the comment period ends up being through, pretty much through a lot of January as opposed to
So can you see this?
No.
I'm not.
That's that's what Peter sent.
Yeah.
Peter just sent that.
Jean could probably see it.
Well, I am here in my screen, yeah. So if we did it in um So if we did it in, um, I don't know if that helps at all.
Sure.
So we were talking, what, the, the next monitor that went up, we were talking about getting it in the monitor for the twenty-second of November, right?
Right.
And that would mean we would have to get it into them.
Between that time.
So we could do the, i, if you decided at the next meeting on ten twenty-two that you wanted to submit it, we could actually submit it, and it could go on the eleven eight.
I, I don't think that's gonna happen.
Right, or what you're suggesting, I think, is we have that meeting in October, we have a public hearing in November, early, and then we submit it for filing either, it, it, between eleven sixteen and twelve.
What's the next column after that? Like, so if you, on the eleven twenty-two, no, 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 yeah, so.
The comment period.
ENF comments.
They start, is that when they start, or they end?
That is when they.
Must be end.
End the comment period. And then this is where a decision comes, is the, let me just.
That's not a thirty-day comment period, it's like a ten-day.
E, ENF decisions, EIR comments, so.
I, I, I have to study that and understand what it means, because.
It's the, Kate, I don't know if you wanna go through this. So the decisions don't come, the actual decision doesn't come till here. We get comments on the ENF by twelve thirty-one, twenty-four. If there are comments, and you have to, if they're significant enough, you might have to, um, resubmit, right, Kate?
So the goal for submitting the expanded environmental notification form is to be able to receive from MEPA guidance on, do you need anything else? Or is this, meet the requirements of what we've prepared to date so far through the CWMP. So by posting it on twelve eleven, it's basically looking at the environmental notification form and its attachments to say, hey, you're missing this, or you need to add more, so that we can provide our comment review. So the immediate ENF comments are from any of the stakeholders that get the automatic notification from the environmental monitor to say, we need to see more details on X, Y, and Z parts of the plan, we need to submit some data. So then, MEPA will collect all of that information from stakeholders. They will make a decision, the ENF decision, and then they will determine what else is needed in order to fulfill MEPA requirements. That is what they call their ENF certificate, or the initial findings. You would get it by January tenth, twenty twenty-five, which is the thirty-day window from the twelve eleven appetizers start. So let me rephrase to say that MEPA has thirty days for their comments. Others have less time, because MEPA gets to collect all the other comments and provide them January tenth. So then if you scroll up, telling to the heading, basically, EIR decisions, this is when you can expect to see the final certificate with the exceptions or additions that people will require you to file before the CWMP can be implemented. Um, so an example of this might be, I'm just trying to think of an example that I've seen from other CWMPs that are submitted. Okay, um, if you have the board middle school is outside the area of critical environmental concern, so the treatment plant is not the concern, but twelve of the houses in the Finney's Harbor needs area are considered, um, to fall within the area of critical environmental concern. So while the work might be done in the right of way, uh, MEPA might require that an endangered DC study be done for the portion of homes in just this area of Finney's Harbor, where there might be a potential concern, and that when you go to do a construction permit, that you'll be required to file that effect. And so that's like an example of a very specific EIR decision that would be excluded. If it's a single or individual, and there are no others, then you can get it a week sooner. You can get it as soon as, what I'm saying, in twenty-five. But they have up until the CWMP to be able to provide additional products if they need to.
Okay.
Thanks, Kate.
All right, so I think we need to, I, I, as, as far as timelines, the February, the, the filing by eleven twenty-two, comments received by twelve twelve, that's not too bad. So if, if, so if you do the eleven twenty-two, and comments received by twelve twelve, then, then it's, you.
Put the down one. Yeah.
That's good. The, the other one, if you, if we didn't do that, I wouldn't wanna do twelve eleven with comments by twelve thirty-one. I wouldn't do that one. If we miss the eleven twenty-two filing, then the next filing would be to file by mon, uh, the, the twelve-three to twelve sixteen, which would be Monday, twelve twenty-three, and then the comments would be till one thirteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and we also have another CWOP for early in December. So if we kind of target those two things, and then figure out, like, wha, how we would do scheduled public hearings. I think, um.
Now this is the extra microphone.
Thank you. I forgot. That couldn't be earned. Thank you.
I think at this point, I know I've lost my focus.
Yeah, all right, but I, I think we have.
Those two, so those two are the goals?
Yeah, I think those two are the goals.
Here are those two that I highlighted.
Yes.
Okay.
And I think if we start, if you could like send that, if you can email that to me, that would be great, 'cause then we can start thinking about possible public hearing dates, and, and, um, that would, that would fit into those timeframes, and, and give us time, uh, and give us time if we get, if public input, that we have another workshop that would be able to allow us to make that secondary date. So let's, let's try for that. Okay, are we good?
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
We're good. Second.
Um, this has to be a roll call vote for, vote for the motion to adjourn, so Jean, you still on there? Yes. Peter?
Yes.
MJ, yes, and Emery?
Yes.
And adjourned at four fifty-five. Sorry, we went long.